... Things were kind of weird. Just a little bit weird. Which leads me to if not, maybe that's what we're...
Well, I'm just saying, it might be problematic.
Out of fairness, actually.
Yeah, well, watch out, they may be hiding.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, it's good, nice.
I'll call this meeting the City Council order. Will you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for the record, we are missing Coleman tonight. Aaron Berg is in Yakima for an event, and all council are here. Council on the consent calendar tonight, we have items A through E.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent calendar items A through E.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Kinzer, seconded by Councilman Carnegie to approve the consent calendar items A through E. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. So, tonight we have a treat. We have Mr. Richard Brockman. Richard's been here before, but it's been a couple of years, so I thought we would invite him to speak on the Skagit River watershed. And you're up, Richard.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and City Council members, and citizens of Seidrowauley. Appreciate being back to talk with you again about salmon recovery, and habitat, and fish, and how things are going in Skagit River watershed.
Can I stop you just a minute?
Yes.
How is the speaker back there? Can you hear? So, Richard, that mic's kind of sensitive, you have to speak into it.
Oh, there's one of those. Is that any better? Can I...is that any better? Yeah?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Right, that sounds familiar.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, I cannot see the slides, so this is going to be interesting.
You can pick it up in turn.
I...yeah, I'd like to see you all, and see you all at the same time, so I'll just do the best I can with what I got. So, again, my name's Richard Brocksmith. I'm the executive director of the Skagit Watershed Council. We're a nonprofit organization with 37 different members. I'll cover that again in just a moment. I wanted to give you a very brief background on salmon recovery process and organizational structure in the state of Washington, and what we've done in this area to work further on habitat degradation, restoration, and protection. Give you, if you want, a history of some of the projects that we've done, some of the successful outcomes of our projects that we've been working on, and some local examples of some things that are proposed, right here in, back out in Hanson Creek in particular. I have some additional slides that would give a history of different fish runs, how good escapement data, the escapement is essentially the number of fish that get out to spawn in the watersheds, and a history for all the species in the Skagit River. So, I probably won't have time to cover all of those. The good news is that some of our fish are doing really well, and others have seen some declines, but I'm happy to answer questions on that if time allows. So, sound still doing okay? Okay. So, I'm going to start with, that's the Skagit watershed, of course, covers multiple counties. Our organization is nonprofit, it's got 37 different members. These are organizations, not individuals, who all have an interest in salmon recovery in the watershed. That includes county, multiple cities, nonprofit organizations, tribes, state agencies, federal agencies, that are all doing their piece of salmon recovery. There's not a fee to join the watershed council, it's just a commitment to collaborate and work together. Step me back for a second. In, you know, 80s and 90s, salmon really began to decline in western Washington, Washington generally, and actually, amazingly, some of the runs in Skagit are actually in fairly good shape and didn't decline as much as many of the others. But we knew that there was a need for us to work together. The state in 1998 established the Salmon Recovery Act, R C W 7785, which asks all local jurisdictions to designate a lead entity for salmon recovery. And folks in this neighborhood, in this area, got together and have designated the watershed council as that lead entity. All that really means is that we maintain committees of representative interest in the watershed, to do this work in a collaborative fashion, to work together, to figure out what is it that's causing salmon declines, and what should we invest our resources in and get good work done. So that's what a lead entity is. Of course, in 1999, multiple stocks were listed under the Federal Endangered Species Act. Chinook salmon and steelhead salmon followed on after that have been listed, bull trout in the upper watersheds. So, we have had this state response and federal response, and we're essentially the local arm of salmon habitat recovery, just serving a convening function to bring these 37 members together to work together. So, there's, as you know, there's salmon run up and down the rivers, up into the headwaters. After they've lived in the watershed for a while, they go out to the ocean, and they're out there for quite a while, so they cover a lot of different habitats. You also know that we fish on salmon. There's a lot of fishing that goes on, there's harvest, there's hatcheries, and so there's many different things that affect salmon success. And the way that salmon recovery is being dealt with in the state of Washington is that you have this group working on habitat, which I've described now through the watershed council and others, doing a lot of voluntary actions. And then you have the co-managers, which is a general term referencing the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, and local tribal entities, tribal Native American tribes. So, in Skagit, of course, we have four Native American tribes, three of them have fishing rights, so together with DFW, they're the co-managers, and they manage the harvest and hatcheries. So I can answer some questions on that, and we certainly try to stay informed and knowledgeable about what's going on in hatcheries and harvests. But our main work has been on habitat, finding out what the habitat degradations are that we can have an effect on, and designing projects that would re-improve that habitat, and really balancing those projects with what the community will support. What can we do that fits within the community's values for the watershed, working together in that way? So, this local process is really referred to as the Washington Way. This was designed by the state legislature to bring parties together, to work together, because we really want to avoid the alternatives, which are to go to court and fight this out through litigation. So, really, it is helpful to have everybody working together as best as we can, because this is far better than the alternative. So, I have a few slides. Our mission, understand, protect, and restore healthy ecosystems for sustainable fisheries. That's not just for the sake of fish, but also for fishing, obviously. What we do is advance a common habitat strategy. What are the things that are having the biggest effect? We serve as a forum and leader for implementing and tracking that strategy. We use adaptive management principles to figure out what's working, what needs to be improved, and adjusting our strategy. And more and more are needing to work on understanding and supporting the mission and broader salmon recovery progress through community engagement. So those are the things that we do, and I'll give you an example of the first one. Chinook salmon, as far as habitat impacts go, we have really good science that says that we're getting quite a few fish spawning in the upper watershed. And chinooks spawn in, you know, the fall, mostly late summer, fall, and, you know, are in the gravel over the winter, and then they start popping out in the spring and outmigrating. They have multiple life histories, but the big point is that we have a lot of juveniles that are able to seed all of the rearing habitat as they go down the river. But because we have narrowed the river and put up dikes and disconnected wetlands in the floodplains, they don't have places to get out of the river's flow and to rear and stay in the river for longer periods of time. And what that means is that they get pushed down into the bay at too small of a size. And if they're really small when they get down into the bay, they have a very reduced chance of survival. So our main, the science is very clear that our main limiting factor is this rearing habitat in the middle and lower Skagit. So that's the example for Chinook, why we're focusing on restoring rearing habitat, these off-channel wetlands on the edges of the river. So here's an example of the map that we use to prioritize where we put our capital investments for projects. The red and yellow at the bottom, the red is the estuary area, that's mostly, a lot of that's been disconnected from the channels. And then the yellow are the floodplain habitats. You can see that through the middle skagit up through concrete, big wide floodplains that were historically wetlands for salmon. And then back up towards Rockport, you see another large area of off-channel wetlands as well. So those are our priority areas. We also work in some of the tributaries, those are purple and yellow, where the majority of fish spawn. So those are our priority areas. I put a little close-up on here so you can see exactly where we are, Seidrowauley. Historically, this was the edge of the Skagit River floodplain. We don't really see that anymore because of the changes in the river as much. But those are the priority areas where we're working, and that, so for instance, the lower part of Hanson Creek. So I'll come to that in a moment. So the kinds of projects we do are to plant trees along riparian areas to replace culverts so fish can pass up to the spawning areas. We set back dikes and restore off-channel wetlands. And if there's high-quality habitat, that's at threat of development, that would impact salmon resources, we acquire lands. So we've completed about 140 projects in the last 17 years. There's about 1,400 acres of trees that have been planted along the streams in the main stem of the river. We've set back dikes to restore about 900 acres of, I'm sorry, of estuary habitat in the lower watershed, down on Fur Island and the Conway area. 29 miles of stream have been improved with water addition and reneandering. Over 100 miles of streams have been made accessible by replacing culverts. We've treated upland roads up in the Forest Service and private forest roads so that there's less sediment that's coming down into the spawning areas and the rearing areas. And finally, for this list, about 3,700 acres of habitat, this is high-quality habitat in the floodplains that was at threat of development, have been acquired and put into permanent protections. So you can see, after 15 years of sustained effort, there's been a significant amount of progress that's happened in the watershed for salmon. Sorry, I just wanted to give you a couple of examples of riparian areas. Maybe for the sake of time, I won't cover this in much detail, but these kinds of areas, this is Rockport where the bridge crosses, there's an area that was cleared and was, they tried to farm it, and I know that there was a lot of flooding, it wasn't very successful, so now the county owns the land, and we've replanted this area in trees. I was just up there meeting with some landowners this afternoon. And we put together for the first time a database of all the areas that we've replanted. This is just upstream of Seidrowauley in what we call the Ross Island Reach. And all the blue areas are areas that have been returned to native vegetation. And so if you take all of these areas, and working with all these different members of ours, Drainage Districts, Skagit River System Cooperative, Skagit Fisheries Enhancement Group, et cetera, we, this is a draft database, we have 1,300 acres that we've tabulated so far, and I'm still working on it, so I think there's another couple hundred acres, so we'll be up to closer to 1,400 or 1,500 by the time we get them all together. So that's the work that we've done, making really good progress. I wanted to show you the estuary, I said, there's 900 acres of projects that we've done, and we have a goal to restore 60% of the, 60% increase in rearing capacity in the estuary. And with the projects that we've implemented to date, we're 24% of our way towards our goal. So that's what the chart here shows, is the X is where we are today, we're slightly ahead of our goal if you look at it over a 50-year time period. So, so-and-steady progress on these projects. Here's a local example of a project that we funded the design on in past years, and this year, we reviewed a list of nine or 10 projects, and this project was, met all of our priority areas, and was broadly supported by the local landowners who live in the area, and by our review of what sorts of support there are in the broader community, I guess. So Hanson Creek, there was a management plan that was written by the county in 2002. As you know, there, historically, these rivers were fairly well, they were straightened, and they were dredged, and through the regulatory changes that have happened in the last couple of decades, there's no longer able to easily dredge these river systems. And so, this was a manager plan done by the county and neighboring landowners that tried to find a better way to manage the creek without having to dredge it. And so, you know that there was a project that was completed upstream of Highway 20, it's about 140 acres that were restored. And then the new site is downstream of Highway 20. So here's the previous project that's been in place now for about 10 years. Here's Highway 20, and so we're looking now at the reach between Highway 20 and Minkler Road. It's in a ditch, and when the rains come, the flood goes, you know, waters go everywhere. It's a big flooding problem, but it's also a problem for fish. So we're excited to be able to restore this site and do a lot of good for the neighbors and reduce flooding at the site at the same time. So it's really a win-win project that we're working on. Here's the site with the highway at the top, the river's currently here, and it's going to be remeanded through this floodplain that's a lower elevation, so more of the water will stay in the channel. Minkler Road is just off-site here, sorry about that. But we also came to realize that the bridge was a little undersized for a channel that's going to hold more water. So we're also working with Skagit County to replace the bridge itself and make the capacity for the bridge bigger. So, again, it's reducing flooding, it's improving county infrastructure, local infrastructure, and restoring fish, all in one fell swoop. It's a very large project. Not sure, we want to cover all these metrics, but we're essentially increasing the channel length by 3,600 feet, and adding about 50 acres of new habitat and flood storage capacity. Price tag is $4.3 million. So it's by far our biggest project this year. This is a partnership, the leads are the Skagit County and the Skagit River System Cooperative, working with multiple landowners in the reach. I think the Puchasound Energy is also donating, or providing resources, financial resources. So that, I think my time is fairly well up, I've been at this awhile, but I do have more slides if you have specific questions about how fish are doing, or other types of projects we're working, but I really wanted to see if you had some questions of us. And I should also be transparent that I'm really hoping that the town of Seidrowauley would be interested in joining the Skagit Watershed Council and participating in these voluntary efforts, because I truly believe that working together, we're going to get a lot more done, and it's far better than the alternative of not making enough progress, not working together.
Thank you, Richard. Is this brief available? Can you send it to council, or is it available to the general public somewhere?
Absolutely. I can provide, in fact, I've left a copy on the local computer, so that could be distributed, it's public information, it could be distributed as you see fit.
Council have questions?
Yeah. How does the Hanson project affect the recreational trail that goes through there?
Yeah, great question. So, that's, the previous project that was done is on the western edge of northern state recreation area, right? And so, all of this work was done with no impact to the area that's going to be, as I understand, developed and support economic development in the future on the western face, and on the eastern face, there was a berm put up that protects the field that's going to become, as I understand, an active recreation area.
Well, I guess not that location, I'm talking about the Rails to Trails that's on the south side of the highway.
Okay, downstream. The Rails to Trails is directly adjacent to SR 20, so all of this work would be downstream and would have no effect on Rails to Trails.
Okay, so where's the bridge going, then?
Uh-huh. It's on Minkler, Minkler Road.
Oh, okay.
Which is an undersized bridge now, and is part of the reason why it floods across the floodplain so badly instead of staying in that area. Right? That is one of our goals, is to try to add more trails in these projects and leave places. So, another project we're doing upstream in Marble Mount at the Precitan Park, it's a county park, we're extending the trail network two or three times beyond what it is now.
Great, thanks.
I have a question. I was wondering, how old is that bridge, the Minkler Bridge?
My understanding is that historically, maybe there's folks who grew up around this area who know this in detail, but a lot of these bridges were, actually, they were real bridges, they were raised on piles, and so this was back when they were first built, turned in last century. And then somewhere around the 60s or 70s, a lot of those pile-raised structures were deteriorating enough, they were filled in and turned into culverts. And a lot of those culverts now are far undersized, and they don't pass fish, and they don't pass floodwaters. So this was, this bridge is probably 60s or 70s, so it's about 50, 50 years old. It could last a while longer, but it doesn't meet its objectives of fish passage or fish, or passing floodwaters.
Are they the same size of the culvert with that bridge, or how big is it now?
Yes, I can't give you the specifics, but it's going to be a far bigger span than the, it's a round corrugated metal culvert now, and it's going to become a bridge, and it's...
It's a culvert out?
Yes, yes, sir, the culvert's being, coming completely out, the bridge...
We're going to the oval to make more width than this.
Right. This is such a big channel that the culverts won't meet the design criteria. So we had to go to a bridge, and that's why it's the $2 million price tag. That's right.
I'm curious, with all the projects that you've completed, how has the success been as far as saving the fish?
Yeah.
Helping them repopulate?
That is the ultimate metric that we have to judge ourselves by. And it is difficult, though, because salmon have these four, five-year lifespans, right?
Right.
Except, you know, some of them have two, pink's have two, but the, it's really, it's very difficult, and it would take a lot of money and effort, which hasn't been allocated or supported by the state yet, to sort of track all of that. What we can connect success to is the behavior and growth of the juveniles. So, we have what we call an intensively monitored watershed program down in the estuary, where we're tracking what the juvenile capacity used to be versus what it is today, and we're seeing a lot more capacity, more growth in the juveniles. And so we have very solid evidence that this rearing habitat is being used, and fish are responding to that. If you look at the adults, one of the things that's interesting in this watershed is we have had a much more stable return of Chinook. So, this graph shows all the summer and fall Chinook in green, and then there's also what we call spring Chinook, these are in the upper watershed, down here lower. And so while most watersheds have had this real strong negative decline, and even in the last couple of years, they've seen real strong declines in the return of Chinook, Skagit has continued to maintain this very stable pattern. So we would like to think that we're having a big effect on this, that the hatchery and harvest reforms have had some improvement on it as well. It's, it would be inappropriate for me to claim that we know that for sure, but we do feel like this is having a good effect in the Skagit, we've been very focused on these things that are scientifically proven to help these fish.
And so that is the goal of the project that you're working on now, the $4 million project, is that it's supposed to help the juveniles have opportunity to become bigger, larger before they enter the ocean?
Yes, ma'am.
And also then for return, is that the same?
That was the question, I'm sorry.
Well, and then with also returning, would it make a difference for them as far as the return?
Right. So, this, that is, you were spot on, the goal is to help rearing habitat, and that's for the juveniles. And so we're working in the lower parts of these tributaries, it's our second priority, tier two, like Hanson. We'd rather work in the main stem where we can, we're working in the tributaries where they come into the main stem, and that is to allow them a place to get out of the floods and to rear instead of being pushed out. So that is the goal. Of course, it will also help adult spawning as well, because if you have a ditch, especially if it's dredged, but even a ditch, there's a lot of erosion and deposition in that ditch line, but if you're able to reconnect your channel to the floodplains and spread out the force of the water and spread out where the sediment settles, you're going to protect the ability of those adults to spawn and to reproduce successfully, so.
So I think we might have time for one more question, if someone has one.
Was that the purpose of this watershed here on the north side of Highway 20 along Hanson Creek? Floodwater disperses out there and get that sediment out of that mainstream? And is it working?
That is exactly right. We have seen a significant increase in fisheries resources there, in that spawning in that area. That is, that is true. And, you know, Hanson isn't the biggest Chinook watershed, so I do want to mention that. It's actually a better steelhead stream, but steelhead are a priority of ours as well. It will help some young Chinook, and so that's why Hanson is a focus of ours. Historically, it would have been a broader, bigger system with more rearing habitat. I think we're getting a lot of that back now.
Well, the Chinook are here, it's very impressive to listen to them jump and slap and swish around, you know they're there when they're, when they're active.
There you go, yeah. I appreciate your interest, and I hope that you will consider joining the watershed council. Be good to have you on board.
Okay, and Richard's office is down in Mount Vernon, and we've sat down and, I guess, argued on at least one occasion, but he's always welcoming, so if you have more questions, you can go on down. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving ahead, we are now to our public comment period. As always, I'll remind you that you have three minutes at the mic. Please state your name and address clearly in the microphone, and address the council directly, and don't engage in cross-examination or arguments, so who's first? Very good. Everybody tonight. So next, we had kind of a short agenda tonight, as you can see, so I'll go straight to reports. Chief Tucker.
All right, so we've had several comments on people noticing the commercial vehicle enforcement. Officer Eddie's been out there hitting it pretty hard, and we're looking at, we've devoted a couple extra hours every two or three days when he's got the time and that there's enough truck traffic, to work on a little extra enforcement out there, and he's, what's getting out? That there's somebody looking at all the trucks coming through town now, so.
I see Tina in the back saying now she wants to say something.
On the second note, the, we've been getting all the reports on... On the second note, we've been getting all the reports on the storm coming up the next three or four days. Looks like it's going to come through in a couple of different waves. Looks like the first wave is going to come through in Thursday night and then probably hit us again on Saturday. Dean has been doing extensive prepare work to get ready for this storm, I think. But we're as prepared as we can be. So we're going to get extra cones and road closed signs. I'm going to talk to Nathan tomorrow just in case we'll need to call any city crews out just to coordinate that. But we're not anticipating anything huge. We're not thinking storm again yet. But we're always prepared for that to happen anyway, so we're ready to go. And the final thing I've got is that our detectives have pretty much wrapped up their portion of the, being on the smart team for the mall shooting investigation. And something, I don't know if it's come out yet or not. It will come out in the next day or two. They've identified the initial target was the theater at the mall. And the subject had actually scattered it out, was preparing to come back, and he had propped open the door to come back. And apparently somebody pulled the prop out of there. He stuck his cellphone in the door to keep the back doors open. Somebody pulled the cellphone and he couldn't get back in the mall, so he went into Macy's instead. Kind of a sad affair for everybody involved, but it could have been worse. It could have been a crowded, dark theater that this happened in. So outstanding service. On Saturday, we went to, very well done over in La Conner for one of the, one of the victims. And the folks from Macy's Corporate and the Estee Lauder Corporation, the Estee Lauders were actually there for the funeral. It was very impressive. That corporate culture is, seems to be pretty class act. It was a pretty moving, moving thing. And one of our Congresswoman, Delbonne, was there to hand out a flag to the family. So it was very impressive. Yeah. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. So it's past public comment time, Tina, so you can't talk, but I know what she wanted to say and it's good. So Sergeant Eddie's having a very noticeable effect.
It's Colonel Eddie.
Colonel.
Oh, yeah.
In his, in his military mode. He's having a very noticeable effect up there on Highway 9, maybe up to 50% reduction in truck sneaking down. And I wish that we had had the money to do a study beforehand so we could really know what the effect has been, but it's noticeable.
Yeah, it does affect Cook Road, too.
He's enjoying himself, too. It's like having a hunting permit. And there's really no limit and you don't get your hands all sticky.
Well, just as long as truckers understand, we love truckers and we love them coming through town, as long as they follow all the rules.
And that's all he's asking.
Yep. Thank you, chief. Chief Klinger?
Like Chief Tucker said, we're prepared for the windstorm. We made sure the chains were facing the right way on the saw this year. So that should work better. If you laugh, it did. It happened. We had our annual Give Burns a Boot fundraiser this last weekend. The guys, the volunteers raised over $22,000 to give to the foundation. So they're, after expenses, they'll be giving a little over $21,000. It was a fantastic year, the best year they've ever had. The guys did a really good job. So they're, they're pretty pleased with themselves right now as well they should be. So other than that, we're just preparing for this little event that's coming and we'll see what Mother Nature deals us.
Thank you. Patsy?
Well, the state auditors are still here. They finished most of the financial part of the audit and they're working on compliance, accountability issues. You may receive a phone call from a gentleman named Scott Hilton saying he's with the auditor's office, and he really is. He, one of the things they selected to look at was, do we really have iPads? They were purchased, are they really being used? And I suggested that he come to the council meeting tonight because he could see for himself, but you know, unfortunately, he had something else to do this evening.
Can we all hold him up for the camera and he can review the tape?
So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that it is, it's not a prank call. It's a real call when he does, when and if he calls you. And they will also be letting you know when they have the exit conference. They're supposed to be here through the 20th and then that's with completing the field work. And then they'll, you know, take a few weeks to figure everything out. And then they'll contact you about an exit conference. And we're also in the middle of budget process. As you well know, we're on schedule with our calendar and expect to have the mayor's balanced budget for you at the next work session.
Not it, Patsy? Judith?
Well, I did not go to the final meeting of the emergency-
I had to hear about it.
Yes. It was very bad planning because of the tax situation and I was very busy. So I didn't go. However, it did back up my iPad, so I had to go see Bill today to get it cleared.
Okay. Yeah. They got along without you, but I did, but I did know that you hadn't gone. All right. Anything else, Judith? Jermaine?
I don't have anything.
Brenda?
Nothing.
Julia?
Um, yeah. First, I want to thank Patsy because I know she works hard to get ready for the audit. She does a great job and really, you know, can't sing your praises enough. Thank you, Patsy. And also, the self-defense class that was offered by the city, by Dave and Jet, oh, that was fantastic. You know, when I went into it thinking that I wouldn't be able to do anything, and when I came out of it, I actually felt more empowered. So it was fantastic. So thank you for that, loaning them.
You get your ninja qualification now?
Not, not quite.
Junior ninja?
She's wearing black. That's a start.
Working on that black belt. Anyway, thank you.
Chuck?
No.
Rick?
Well, it's not really a city thing, but a friend of mine and I think a friend to this community, Lowell Ingberg, passed away at his home yesterday. He's been battling renal failure for a number of years. He contributed to this community a whole lot more than people really, really knew with his son, Denny, and his contributions to Little League football, the support to the car community, the car clubs and things that he's done. Wonderful man. Operated low auto sales out there on Highway 20 for 35 years, you know, gave a good product, not really a low-end product, but an economical priced vehicle to a lot of people, made sure it worked. If it failed, he'd bring it back, he'd make it right. Just a wonderful guy. Just thought I'd throw that out, people to see that. Kind of short notice for a service, but it'll be held on Saturday morning at the Inspire Church on Township and State Street at 11 o'clock in the morning. So you know Lowell and his family. And they appreciated you stopping by and conversing with them and helping them with-
There'll also be a meeting at the community center afterwards.
Following the services.
Yeah.
I just want to thank Nathan, Kevin and crew. Nathan's not on our Log of Rodeo Board anymore, but he's still offering lots of help where he can fit in. So we appreciate his, his help. Tell him thank you.
You're done, is it?
No.
Okay. Well, Rick, you hit my first one, which was Lowell Ingberg, because his generosity- no, George, you're done. His generosity is really legendary in this town and it's a sad thing that we've lost him. I want to talk about experience I've done for the second year in a row, the Cubs Strong Day that they do at the school. I know some of you get invitations and some of you may have gone and done it. It's a very uncomfortable, touchy-feely experience, but I think it's really valuable to the young freshmen coming in. And it's a great thing that our school does for kids. And it's a good reminder for adults, too. The guy who does it does a really good job. So it was moving and teared me up a few times and I hated it, part of it, but I want to do it again next year. And I suggest that if you have time, go ahead and do that. Yeah, Houston is a guy's name. So without objection, I will adjourn.
Call for a motion?
No.
I don't need to.
Unless you-
We're adjourned, unless you object.
I don't.
It's, it's my duty.